We'd like to be heard though in this.
Absolutely, we may put you first, sir. Thank you for stepping up. I have a seven o'clock. What I'd like to do is open the Belliham Planning Board Meeting for Thursday, December 9th, 2021. We're going to move our agenda around a little bit. It'll be a public hearing for 59 South Main, I'm sorry, 881 South Main Street and 59 Susan Lane. This is Jim, can you give us a brief overview here?
Sure, so this is just an A and R application, so it's not a hearing, just a public meeting on a noticed agenda that this applicant is providing, or excuse me, the abutter is providing some additional square footage for the applicant. I did take a look at the plan and it does meet our approval not required requirements. I did ask for some modifications to that plan. And I did ask for the signature of both owners, as that's always required. But I did also receive a question from an abutter, or not the abutter, the other owner that's providing the land. And so, so that's why we wanted to make sure both signatures are certainly on there. And the plan has been reviewed. And I believe Mr. Doyle has perhaps spoken with the building commissioner as well. But I would be interested in his thoughts.
Mr. Doyle, you want to step up?
Sure.
Please introduce yourself and your address.
Sure.
And your firm.
My name is Daniel Doyle. My law firm is in Blackstone, Mass. That's my own law firm.
Okay.
I, Mr. Miss appears had contacted me when Mr. Franco had approached them about obtaining a portion of his land. It appears that Mr. Franco, unbeknownst to Mr. Beers, his car garage, his pool and deck are actually on Mr. Beers' property.
Okay.
And so, Mr. Beers wanted to help Mr. Franco out. And by doing so, by parcelling off a portion of his back land, so that it would, that Mr. Franco's property will now conform to zoning and all of his curtilage is within his own property.
Yep.
My only concern was, and I had raised it with the town plan, I was not able to speak with Mr. Itari, I think that's the municipal inspector.
Okay.
I was not able to, I was not able to meet with him, contact him, I did email. But I was just, wanted to make sure that the remaining parcel that Mr. Beers has is going to not be more unconforming or with current zoning.
Yep.
It also creates somewhat of an odd shape that leads to his property, the remaining parcel. And I wanted to make sure that that's not going to be an issue for Mr. Beers and in his property down the road.
Okay.
So that was my only concern, and that's the only concern that Mr. Beers would have as well.
I think justifiably so. Jim, you have a report?
Yep, yeah, I think Mr. Doyle is spot on with that. I did look at, after I saw his inquiry, I did take a peek at the plan. And I did, my only question that I did raise back to, I believe was Roberto, was the lot shape factor. And, you know, I'm not able to vet that, a civil engineer has to take a cursory review of it on that A and R. So if that lot shape factor is not included and the owner, the owner has a concern, you know, it takes both parties to move this plan forward. So, I mean, if that hasn't been vetted and needs to be vetted, you certainly could put this on the next agenda item. That's completely up to the applicant and the owner.
Yes, sir.
I spoke with, speaking, I'm sorry. I was speaking with him, I did speak with the engineer, he said that it's within whatever the requirements that the town asked him to do. And that's what they did. After it was done, he added changes that.
Do you have that in writing, sir?
In writing, no, that's why the.
I would want that, Jim.
What I'd like to do is ask that that can be put in paper, so we can memorialize that. Obviously, we could approve it pending that document, or we could push it off to the next agenda. Jim, what is your feeling?
Yeah, it's certainly, you know, it takes both parties. So if the owner has hesitancy on it and doesn't want to move the application forward. So just so we're all aware, once that plan has got stamped in, or the application got stamped in, you have 21 days to make a determination. So the board could, if they are inclined and would like to, you know, assist, and you guys have the availability, we could certainly schedule a one-issue Zoom meeting for perhaps early next week or later. Well, it needs to be 48 hours, yeah, so sometime next week, if you would like to assist in that. Or otherwise, you know, we certainly could just continue it or request an extension. It's up to the board, you know, I know you guys always like to try and accommodate that.
Well, I know we want to accommodate both parties. I think a fair accommodation, I'm just looking to the board. Could we do a one-issue Zoom meeting one night next week?
Can I suggest something? Well, Jim, what would happen if they just withdrew and then came back? It's the holidays, crazy times.
Yep, yeah, that's, I mean, that's a typical approach is absolutely, you can just withdraw and refile once both parties are ready to move forward with this. So you certainly could do that, that gets away any kind of concern over that 21 days. I just know, I believe the applicant perhaps had some time constraints. And so that's the only reason I recommend or offer that.
Yeah, just a little brief. Can you step over here so we can hear you?
Follow what the fence was when I bought the house, and that's why this whole thing is happening right now. Because I decided to sell, and I'm like, okay, of course, and somebody else's yard now. So that's why I approached Mr. Beers, my neighbor, we were talking about, we tried to do an easement, but I did the plan for an easement, but the town wouldn't accept an easement. So I had to do the purchase, that's why we're doing this. And meanwhile, the house was on sale, somebody decided to purchase the house, they're living in the house, but they're renting. There was an agreement between me, me and I, and the people who are living at the house at this moment, rent, like paying pretty much a rent until this whole thing is resolved and then we can find clothes on the house. Because I did this whole thing, so I moved to Florida. So this was the only reason I was trying to rush all this week to try to get this done.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Franco's interest is to sell the property, and he did sell it. Thankfully, he was able to still sell it and rent it to them. But obviously, he needs to address this matter and to get it straightened out. Mr. Beers was willing to help, he's still willing to help, but I want to make sure that which remaining. Now, the engineer, the engineer would provide us something in writing that says the remaining parcel, that Mr. Beers parcel would conform to current zoning standards for the town of Belliham. If I get that and I'm satisfied. A written description was done by the engineers for the parcel to be conveyed to Mr. Franco. He did not do a written description of the remaining parcel, and I've demanded that. Because I'm going to want that for the new deed for Mr. Beers.
Yep.
So I need that.
And he needs to as well sell the stuff.
They did, they did the piece that they're going to sell, that Mr. Beers would sell, but not the remaining.
Oh, the remaining was also done today. I requested with the engineer, he did it today. I thought, I apologize, I thought my lawyer had sent it to him already, but it was sent to him earlier.
Again, I know we can withdraw. When is our next meeting? The second?
13th.
The 13th. What is your timeframe on moving, sir?
I'm just waiting on this.
Okay, that's right. I would like, I know it may be difficult, I like to do a one-item Zoom meeting.
It doesn't seem right for us to, the parties are not in agreement yet, and it seems like there's some could be a potential easy resolution, but there might not be.
I think the attorney you said, and you can get a document.
We are, Mr. Beers wants to sell, wants to help Mr. Franco out, he does want to do this. I just want to make sure that Mr. Beers is protected for the remainder of his parcel. Sometime down the road, if he decides to sell and he ends up with a lot that doesn't conform himself, that doesn't meet the current zoning standards with what is remaining for square footage, as well as lot shape, because I know that's an issue for the subdivision regulations for Belliham. And so if the engineer is willing to provide that to me in writing, I'm fine with it. Judge, sorry about that.
I've been called worse, sir.
If I could, if that could be provided to me, and you wanted to do this condition look on that letter, I don't have a problem with that.
Jim, looking for you for advice here. We have a gentleman who has sold his property. You have another gentleman, I guess it's somewhat of a conundrum here. And I'm trying to see, you know, how we can keep both parties happy.
Yeah, so, you know, an A and R, you technically could try and condition an A and R. However, once the plan is signed by the board, it's simply recorded at the registry.
Yeah, I don't think we want to do that.
Yeah, so I don't believe you could, would, I wouldn't recommend conditionally approving. You know, you could, yeah, I think the only alternative is either to request a withdrawal or continue to a date certain.
Mr. Chairman, if I meant, surely we continue to a date certain, and Mr. Franco were to appear by Zoom and I was here. If he had to go to Florida, could we do it that way?
No, I mean, I'm still going to be here.
Okay.
Do you have a closing date or anything like that?
It was October 29th, so we're still delaying until this is resolved.
There's one night, I hate to keep coming up. Are we available one night next week?
Soon, yeah. Yeah, I think I have night meetings. I'm the associate, so.
Well, we still want you there.
I'll make my, I'll make myself available.
And then what, we'll sign this at the following?
No, what we could do, Jim, I believe, is that the documents can be left at the town. If we have a Zoom meeting to be signed.
Right, yeah, so Amy has the documents. So yes, as soon as it's voted upon, you could certainly sign at any point.
So that's too. I'm fine with being coming, helpful, and we've done it in the past, but that's an extra meeting. And then finding time during the day to come down to town, sign something, right? Which is, which is challenging for me. It's not right, it's not, we don't have two owners that aren't ready to go forward. I'm not trying to be difficult, but sort of bend over backwards and then come next week, something might not be approved. We got to do it all again, or we have to meet again today, right?
Man, certainly, does this present a burden if we wait till January 13th?
It doesn't present a burden to me. I'm not sure, obviously, Mr. Franco wants to leave for fraud in Florida, but his buyer is actually in the home, in the home. So it's not like they're backing out of the deal.
They sold their house to.
Right, so I don't think that they're backing out.
Just tell them like, yeah, I'm sorry, they're moving here and I'm trying to do this.
I.
They can finalize and we can just stand up.
I think based on some important from the board. Actually, what I'd like to do, I know we have one person opposed, and the other, and the other board members do.
I'd like to do it for us, too, because then we could do the signing and have it the same night, but first on the next agenda.
All right, so you'll be on the agenda on the 13th, you'll be the first item on the agenda. We'll try to get you on here as quickly as we can. I apologize for the inconvenience.
Mr. Chairman, if the engineers could just provide me with that documentation and that.
And then also send a copy to the planning board.
We're going to need a letter for the extension of the A and R to act on that. I believe, Jim, is that correct?
Yeah, that's perfect, that's what I was just about to say. Yeah, we'll just need a agreement from the applicant and owner to extend this to January 14th. We'll have that executed on the 13th.
13th on 13th.
13th.
13th is the first.
13th is the meeting, 14th is the extension.
Exactly, yep.
So what we'll do is we'll meet on the 13th. The extension will be drafted until 14th, the day after our meeting. You'll hopefully get a document. All parties' result, as well as the planning board, we'll get a document sometime next week. And we'll move forward, it should be fairly clear.
Thanks, Jim.
You can, if you'd like, if you're in Florida, you can appear by Zoom.
That'd be fine.
If I can be here at the.
Okay, if not, you can feel free, you know. All right, just let us know. I believe tentatively, your responsibility for signing has ended. The only signatures that need to be fixed are those of the board members. All right.
Through the chair, to the secretary, should I be communicating with you with the extension? Should we send it to you?
Send it to me and I can forward it to Jim, and then we can just, yes.
I'll talk with your lawyer. And I will take care of it.
That'll be done, I'm too large. I apologize for a little more money. I'm the only one apologizing. See you next door lawyer and across. Thank you very much. The next item is a public hearing on 351, 353 Maple Street. Brian, you want to read the hearing notice?
Yep.
I think we need a vote up of the public hearing. Have a second. All in favor, open the public hearing on 351, 353 Maple Street. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion's approved, the announcement.
In accordance with the town of Belliham zoning bylaws, section 240-16 Development Plan Approval, section 240-54 Stormwater Management, section 240-16 Flexible Parking Option Special Permit, and section 240-19 Major Business Complex Special Permit. The planning board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, December 9th, 2021, at 7:00 PM in the Arcan Meeting Room in the municipal center, as well as utilizing the virtual meeting option found on the town of Belliham's website. The general public may participate in the Arcan Meeting Room in the municipal center, as well as utilizing the virtual meeting option found on the town of Belliham's website. The applicant and owner, GWL Direct, 351 to 353 Maple Street LLC, proposed, proposes to amend the development plan and stormwater management modification decision dated July 27th, 2019. Major business complex special permit dated April 13th, 2017. Flexible parking special permit dated January 26th, 2017. And the scenic road permit decision dated January 26th, 2017. The amendments are requested to construct a 58,006 square foot industrial building expansion with associated improvement to the existing 127,500 square foot industrial building at 353 Maple Street. Approximately 22 acres of land shown on the Sessors map, 37-01 Zone Industrials. The plans are prepared by Kelly Engineering Group at Zero Campanelli Drive in Branch Tree, Massachusetts. The application and plans may be viewed at the Planning and Zoning Office or Town clerk's office in the Municipal Center located in Belliham, Massachusetts during regulation Municipal Center Business Act.
Jim, can you give us an overview?
Absolutely, so this, this property, many, much of the board is familiar with. This is on the corner of Maple and High Street. It's an existing industrial complex that was permitted back in 2017, actually started in 2015. It was eventually decided upon in 2017 with a follow-up amendment in 2019. The request here is to expand upon the smaller of the two buildings with some associated improvements, meaning stormwater improvements, some slight adjustments to the burns and landscaping to continue along the mitigation for sound and visual impacts. And this is all a request to amend those decisions that Brian just read in the hearing notice there. So we're talking about an amendment to the development plan, stormwater management permit, major business complex, flexible parking, and scenic road. And they have all the, they've supplied the board with all the proper materials, Amy and I have gone through those. And I believe Mr. Kelly and his team are there and can walk you through the plan.
Thank you. Mr. Kelly?
I'm where did Lee from Kelly's?
Okay. What was yours, sir?
Brandon Lee from Kelly Engineering Group, here with John Denwiler, the property owner from Everwest, as well as Scott Dunn for the master's associates, the traffic engineer, and Mark Wallace from Tech Environmental, the sound engineer.
Good evening, I'm John Denwiler with Everwest Real Estate Investors. And we're the owners of the property, and I wanted to spend just a moment and provide some color on who we are and the nature of our investment here, and what we hope to achieve this evening with this proposed expansion. So you can have a seat if you want.
Okay, it's up to you.
I'll take it. Everwest is, Everwest Real Estate Investors is a Denver-based investment management firm. We invest on behalf of institutional clients, so pension funds and private equity funds and insurance companies, that sort of investor. We have a national footprint and we acquire real industrial properties, apartments, multifamily, industrial multifamily, retail to some extent, and office properties as well. And my responsibility is for asset management on the east coast of the US. Although we're Denver-based, I'm located in Charlotte, North Carolina. And our presence here in the Boston area, besides the properties on Maple Street, are three office buildings in downtown Boston, as well as an apartment community in Western Massachusetts. So we have some presence here, and we'd like to grow that presence. It's an important market for us. The properties in question tonight were acquired in May of this year. They qualified in our window as a core investment between high quality and high price. It's, we're very satisfied with the investment that we've made. We, our interest tonight is to invest further. It's a community we like, it's a submarket we like from a, from a supply and demand perspective. And we also would like to be able to potentially accommodate the expansion of 711, which is the tenant that occupies the end of the building that could be extended if our request is granted. That, that's our preference. They have an interest in expansion, it's not a commitment from them. So it's potential, we also would be able to accommodate a third tenant to that building if the expansion were granted. But our intent is to make it seamless from a, from a visual perspective with a similar architectural design. And we're hopeful, you know, I'm happy of answering the questions again about the firm and our investment here. That will satisfy your interests.
Do you have a presentation you want to show this evening, Mr. Lee? Thank you, sir, I appreciate you. You may want to pull up a chair, you may be back, I don't, that's your preference, sir.
Well, the property consists of 353 Maple Street, call that lot one, located to the southwest of the property. Lot two, 351 Maple Street, located northeast of the property. Then the west of the property is room 495, Maple Street is located to the east. High Street to the south, and Charles River to the west. Room 140 is to the south. A couple of hundred yards, so. Lot one currently consists of a one-story industrial building. Approximately 127 and a half thousand square feet warehouse with 95 parking spaces and 25 loading docks. Lot two consists of a 300,000 square foot warehouse and distribution building. In total, there's 427,000 and a half square feet of warehouse. The property currently contains a full stormwater management system, so it's utilities and maintenance. The proposed project, due to its expansion of the existing building on lot one. The proposed expansion is 58 and a half thousand square feet, for a total of 186,000 square feet building. There are 12 loading docks located to the east and 46 parking spaces located to the west. Existing sound burn will be extended along the use of the property. There will be no off-site noise impacts. And the acoustic sound study has been updated for the proposed expansion. And it will fully comply with NASTEP noise policy, as well as Belliham Noise and Scenic Road bylaw. The proposed expansion is 130 feet from High Street. And the existing emergency access drive will be relocated to the south of the expansion. The access drive is 100 feet from High Street. The existing trees along High Street will be retained. And additional landscaping will be planted. The existing landscaping will be extended along the east and south of the property. For total of 90, 90. 160 shrubs along the prison property, 100 shrubs around the building, and 27 additional trees, which nine will be maple and oak, as well as 18 evergreen trees. Utilities on the property will be upgraded as well. The existing waterline will be still looped around the proposed expansion, connected to the existing waterline. Here are adequate water capacity on site, and the user is able to water use. The existing septic system was previously designed for 1920 gallons per day. The proposed expansion will only have a total of five design flow of 1410 gallons per day. Stormwater management system will be upgraded. There will be three new proprietary water quality devices that will treat stormwater runoff on the site as well as a new stormwater management basin. Stormwater management system has been designed to fully comply with nasty noise management standards as well as spelling him stormwater by law. Lighting on the site will be consistent with the current lighting. Those will be full LED lights downward facing.
That's over my head.
God, yeah, the, yeah, the top left center plus a minus.
Yeah. Voice from above. We're great.
I know.
Thanks, Joe. This is technology at work.
Looks good.
Right?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you for being here. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, please. Scott Dunn and the Mass Associates. We prepared the traffic assessment for the project. We actually worked on the initial Maple Street development with Kellinger Engineering. And so this, this project represents an expansion of the existing warehouse development. We looked at, we did prepare a standard traffic assessment. So we did counts of existing intersections. We looked at future conditions, identified the traffic impact for the project and also background developments in the area. And did a level service analysis to identify what the overall impact of the project was in terms of delays and queue increases at those study area intersections. So you can kind of see the study area intersections that are highlighted in the, in the yellow circles. We looked at the intersection of, of the site driveway with Maple Street. And then the real critical intersection of Maple Street with Mechanic Street and West Central Street to the south. As you're aware, that, that intersection was modified in 2020. Really with funds from the town, from the state and also due to funds provided by the proponent of, of this development at the time. And so, and we looked at, you know, there's, there's a number of projects that are, that are underway that are also looking at that intersection of Route 140 and Maple Street. So those counts for that intersection were obtained from another study. And I think those counts were conducted in April of 2020. We did the counts of the site driveway with Maple Street in August of 2020. And we did that for the morning, weekday morning and weekday evening hours. And in general, what we found was that the site, speaking specifically of, of the existing 128,000 square foot development or warehouse space, generates traffic at a rate lower than what ITE would suggest for warehouses. The overall site, including the Amazon facility, generates peak hour traffic at a rate that's less than ITE during the morning, but about the same as ITE in the evening. I think after that is when some of the other activities occur with the Amazon facility. But, but this site in particular is much lower than, than ITE would indicate. So I'm just going to give you an overview of the study. If you have any questions, I'll be available to answer them. Getting into some more detail with the trip generation. The existing warehouse, the site trips that we observed during the morning and evening peak hour were pretty low, about 10 during the morning peak hour and 21 during the evening peak hour. Sites people have been occupied. The, this worked out to be trip rates equivalent to point zero eight trips per thousand square feet during morning peak hour and point one six trips per thousand square feet during the evening peak hour. As compared with ITE trip rates of point one seven trips per thousand square feet during the morning peak hour and point one nine trips per thousand square feet during the evening peak hour. So rather than, you know, rather than use the existing trip rates, we defer to ITE in the event that there's, you know, traffic that's generated by a more typical warehouse or something that's more, more consistent with ITE. So that gives us still a relatively small or incremental increase to the project or to the site traffic of 10 trips during the morning peak hour and 11 trips during the evening peak hour. And, you know, that works out to be one vehicle trip every five to six minutes during each of those peak hours, which is not likely to be noticed outside of the, of the immediate area. And certainly when you get down to, to 140 intersection with Maple Street, there's no change in, no change in levels of service. We're looking at delay increases of equivalent to about a tenth of a second on an overall basis. So peak hour trip increases of 10 trips during the morning and one trips during evening equivalent to an average increase of about 1.6% during the peak hours on Maple Street. As I mentioned, the delay increases when it's a tenth of a second at Route 140 Maple Street intersection. And no change in vehicle queues for movements actually in the side driveway. We, during the, during the evening peak hour, likely to be about a vehicle at any given time. So just to summarize, we think the project will have a minimal impact on, on Maple Street traffic flow and on even less so on 140. The truck traffic is, is, driving is designed for truck traffic to continue south. Coming from the, from the south, depart to the south and back out to, to 140 and out to the highway. And we anticipate that the, the, the project can be, can be developed without any real impact or effect on the area road system. So if you have any questions?
Nothing. We'll wait to the end.
Okay, that's fine.
Andy, we want to hear from stormwater or noise. Anyone else you want to present, sir?
Hey, we're all set. There are any questions?
You know, when?
I'm with Tech Environmental. I'm sound.
Okay. Oh, yeah, you want to, can you present to us your findings?
Sure.
You, I believe you are aware, this is a different area in town, being Maple Street. To designate a scenic road.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I was, my name is Mark Wallace. I'm with Tech Environmental. We were involved with sound study back in 2016, 17. So we're familiar with the, with the zoning and the scenic roads noise by law. And that was incorporated into our, into our sound study. So our, our study focused, our sound study focused on the work we had done on the previous development. And we built upon that in our acoustic modeling analysis. So there are two things that we were focusing on. We're looking at obviously the town's noise bylaws, but also the nasty noise policy. And the nasty noise policy is based on incremental change in sound. So we had to look at what the ambient conditions would be to establish the floor. And instead of doing additional ambient sound monitoring, we used the sound air that we collected back in 2016 for the previous development. It's conservative in standpoint of, it's, it's the ambient sound conditions prior to any kind of development going on at the site. So it's a lower background sound level. The sound measurements that we took at that time were during the winter time. So they're very conservative from the standpoint of you don't have other human activity and during any natural sounds from during the other parts of the season where you have, you know, insect noise, you know, leaves rustling and that type of thing. So we captured a low ambient sound condition at that time. And that will be conservative for assessing this expansion. When we did our acoustic modeling analysis, we incorporated the building expansion. We included rooftop equipment that was both with the existing building as well as the expansion. Those are the continuous sound sources that we evaluated in our sound study. And then we had non-continuous sound sources, similar to what we did in our previous study that included idling trucks, backup alarms, trucks moving around the site. So then when we did our acoustic modeling evaluation, it was conservative from the standpoint of evaluating not only the expansion, but the, the building, the full building itself. And the results of that modeling analysis demonstrated we're in compliance with not only the town's zoning and scenic noise by law, but also the nasty noise policy.
I have one question for those people who are listening. And can you clarify what you mean by conservative?
Conservative being a lower sound level.
Okay.
Yeah.
So meaning, are you looking at best case scenario or worst case?
Worst case scenario.
Okay. Because last time there was some confusion at another meeting.
Yeah.
I just want to clarify that.
Sure, understood, yes.
What I'd like to do now, and do you have anything else?
Just one last thing I didn't mention was that we did include the, the expansion of the, of the berm in our model.
Okay. That would be my question. Thank you. Mr. Lee, do you have anything else to add? Jim, you have anything before we go to questions?
Well, I did have just one thing in terms of traffic for Sean. One thing that maybe the board wants to consider is, you know, at this site, we're very familiar with the three businesses there. And with Amazon, you know, we, we could probably tell you exactly how many vehicles are coming in and out. You know, I don't see 7-Eleven and Snyder as much, but I would imagine they would be able to give you those hard numbers that the board could understand. Because I don't believe they do traverse. I think your numbers are probably accurate. They don't come through at peak hour, but they do have their own, you know, peak hour when they leave the facility. So it might be useful for the board to understand, you know, total trips.
We have that. I mean, we don't have it now. We can have it at the next meeting.
That's fine.
Okay.
So. Yeah, I don't believe I have it now, but actually.
What I'd like to note, sir, is that, I guess the delta between now, what's proposed? The change in the proposed traffic traffic would be?
Uh, right, so the, right, I can get you those numbers. The overall total delta is, is 10 in the morning and 11.
Okay. But we can break it down by specifically Snyder's. I think that would be very helpful.
Sure.
Jim, anything else?
No, not, not at this time. I think, you know, we'll get to it. But just for anybody listening in, obviously each of this is going to be peer reviewed. And it's like every, each and every other project. You know, I think this one, if the board wants, is, is appropriate for stormwater peer review, a quick review of traffic as well as a sound analysis. That's all.
What I'd like to ask you to do is can we direct to have that done by the January 27th meeting? Have peer review for stormwater, traffic and noise?
Yeah, I think that's more than enough time to be able to get the peer review done and probably maybe one round back from, from the applicant. I think that's a good.
Then what I'd like to do is ask questions from the board?
Yeah. The area from the building to High Street, it's roughly 130 feet. Anything someone mentioned? Are you going to clear cut that?
No, we're keeping the existing trees on High Street.
Some shrubbery. I seen that on your, on your other country.
20, 27 trees.
Yeah. And if the means of being was on to High Street, that's gravel is there now, correct?
Yeah, that's emergency access.
Okay, and it's going to stay like that, but you're just going to what, bring the hot top all the way up to that gravel area? Is that hot top already?
Nope, we're going to keep it gravel.
All the way? Okay. Well, I just, I'm just looking at it. It looks to me like it was going to be hot top to where the fence is or the gate. So you're just going to keep the gravel all the way to where?
Keeping it.
I'm just thinking from emergency use, you know, how much gravel we're going to do it.
We're paving way to the, to the gate.
Okay, yes, that's what I was saying. That's not paved now, correct?
Correct, because we're.
Because it's quite a ways away. Yeah, okay, all right. Thank you.
Jim, more of a question to you at this point. What did we do in 19? Wasn't there some orientation of the building and all that stuff? Or was that, is that different?
19, you mean the difference between 2017 and 2019?
I don't know. I, I have a memory of, of some other project that changed the building. Is that accurate?
So there was, yeah, an amendment to the development plan in 2019 to accommodate, you know, what, what is there. I can pull up the decision itself. But I believe that actually was the result of the finalized process of 2017 where we had to amend the final decision. Let me, you guys can keep talking. I'll pull it up.
I, I just remember discussions about moving, swinging the building around, putting bays on different sides. But that might have been part of the, I don't know if it was, I just don't have a memory of what that was.
That might have been the 2017.
That might have been.
The note, the project really started 900,000 square feet total. And then it was reduced to the current 427,000. And the building was located where we got the loading on the.
That was part of the 17.
I believe that's part of, yes, part of 17.
Yeah. Yeah, we're going to touch on all of these later. Not wait to peer review.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess I have a couple of questions. So I know in the stormwater report, it says this is a land use high potential flood and load. Is that based on traffic generation or because there's fleet storage on site, you know?
I believe that's based on traffic generation.
Okay. All right, I guess it's not super important, I guess, just making sure that it's, that everything's followed. And you said there's three water quality units. I was trying to figure out where they were on the plan because looking at the grading plan in utilities, I was just, it wasn't completely clear to me. But all the impervious areas going into one of those units, right? Before going into infiltration base.
It's called on the site plan. My cursor is.
Oh, okay, sorry. Oh, haha, okay, sorry.
So that that picks up the two couch basins in the in the molding area.
Yep.
Um, and then there's. There's another one within the couch basin in the parking lot, that picks up all the parking areas. And. This is the third one. There's one right here that picks up the emergency access.
Gotcha.
So all the additional paving areas will be fully treated with water quality devices and then recharged. The infiltration basin.
Gotcha, and the roof drains are also going to the infiltration basin, right, it's not being bypassed to the old or existing.
That's correct.
Okay, all right, um. Again, I have other questions slash cause, but I'll wait till the peer reviews done. I guess one thing actually, as far as the emergency access goes, the twenty foot emergency access. I saw that there's a fifteen foot radius point in the back corner of that building. I think it might be good to have. A truck turn figure for any of the emergency vehicles, whatever the largest apparatuses in Bellevue, just to make sure that it can accommodate. What you have, um, I don't think I saw that.
Yeah, I believe that's consistent with what's currently we do today. We can show that, we can show a fire truck.
And we can put in touch with the public safety officer.
Yeah, they should have that truck turn template. Cool. Okay, I think that's all I have for the time being.
Um, the only question I have is, and I, I think I know the answer, but there's no office component to this addition, right, it's all just warehouse. Or does it depend on the tenant?
We design a small office adjacent to the existing office and at the end of the building, it's there.
Okay.
So if 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 we were to expand seven eleven, there would be no, we wouldn't build that office, but. Uh, we're planning to, it isn't a plan, so at least.
Right.
Did I just pick up on that question?
I think it would be helpful for us to understand the operations as they exist now, and then the change or the proposed change, the operation. Terms of sort of their own metrics of, okay, we're gonna get fifty thousand square feet, we're gonna have. Our plan is to have additional deliveries of X or whatever the plan is, that would be good to know, just to.
Well, I, you don't know that, uh, I can tell you this. I can explain seven eleven's current operations, which are is just light distribution of mostly dry goods. And some refrigerating, that they have a pretty big freezer and and refrigeration. Component of their space, um, and that's what they're distributing food at their stores.
Right, but they they want more space?
They they want more. Warehouse foreman wants more space, which is a little different between corporate entity agreeing to lease more space. And and, you know, our preference would be to lease them, but I cannot tell you that they will expand. So it's conceivable they would be third tenant in that building, not behind fifty thousand square feet. And I don't know what that use would be, it it would not be a manufacturing use, it would be presumably another late distribution used to already exist there. But we don't know what that would be.
So they haven't. No one at corporate levels committed to this?
No, and I don't in any way, shape or form want to suggest that seven elevens are expansion tenant there. That would be our preference, uh, they they have expressed at a local level an interest in more space. But we haven't, you don't have more space to offer them at this point, so we haven't explored it currently.
I guess, I guess then minimally understand what they, what that means to them in terms of their offers, we want more space because we're gonna have more deliveries, we're gonna. We anticipate more, whatever that is.
Sure, uh, as I understand it, it's more of a same, but.
What is that quantified?
Could I ask a simple question?
Sure.
Let me get down to the bare bones. My understanding was at one point, seven eleven wanted more um. Storage capacity for frozen material.
Uh.
Or freezers.
I do not know.
Okay, that's what I've been.
Okay, that that could be.
I I heard the grapevine was something they wanted to look at.
I know that they were contemplating a smaller freezer cooler unit than they, and ultimately built a bigger one.
Yeah.
And when I last toured it, they seemed satisfied, they were glad that they built that more.
Okay.
And seemed satisfied with that, and so I don't know that. It would be odd, it would be difficult to, it happened to build a whole new freezer unit.
Okay. Any other questions, Frank?
If any, so.
Yeah, I I just say, if if there is a seven eleven component or if there's moving sides, and I heard also they may move sides and need space over here and that. If there is a truly seven eleven, if this is designed for them. Or traffic study reports are all based on existing seven eleven operations, then expanding would be good to know what. What it is now versus what the expansion would be. Okay. But it doesn't seem like seven eleven is, you're not designing this for seven eleven, correct? Okay.
Okay, and if if I could just follow up on your point, the the traffic study doesn't assume the existing tenant. Goes into that space, it's just, the the traffic study was developed accounting for a generic.
Generic tenant. All right, I I have a few questions in regards to the traffic study. I know at one point you mentioned it was like a tenth of a second. Difference in our reality, that ends up being a second for most people. You really can't bring it down to um a tenth of a second. Some of your numbers for the traffic study were done by building square footage. We can just get it down to, and you have the impact of the neighbors. The neighbors aren't really concerned about the building square footage, they wanna know what the impact would be in number of additional trucks. I know you are articulated that, but if you can keep moving towards that, moving forward.
Sure.
As opposed to square footage. Um, you know, the neighbors aren't gonna sit there and do the math, they just wanna know what the impact will be.
Sure.
On on their neighborhood.
We can separate that out, it it's, I mean, we use, we use the building square footage to.
I I I understand that.
Trucks, but we can then break it out.
We just, yes, we make it easier for the neighbors.
Sure.
Um. I noticed on your diagrams, it looks like the um. Diagram for the loading docks is virtually identical to what is in the existing building. And I noticed appears that the parking lot is virtually identical to what is currently existing. My question is, uh, do we need to have any parking spaces? I know the, we're trying to get away. From hardtop, is there any way we can reduce any of that?
Um, requested special permit for reduction parking, uh, in the building. Uh, the required parking of seventy three spaces.
Yeah.
And the, there are currently ninety five parking spaces, we're proposing forty six.
Okay, so you you wanna reduce this, okay.
Yes, so it's total of hundred forty one, so it's uh less than half of the.
Okay, great, because I wanna reduce it as well, I I just didn't, you know, was not able to look at the current numbers, just looking at something in black and white. Um, I know in the last uh go around here, we talked about delivery trucks having um. Swish alarms to reduce backup noise. Will that be uh requested from a future tenant?
Uh, we hadn't contemplated that, but we could.
Okay, if you could look into that, that was something we discussed through this whole process process before.
Okay, so is that a condition today?
No, is it, I'm, Jim, I believe it was a request.
Uh, yeah, that the last go around, we certainly did request that, um, you know, the future tenants look into different aspects to minimize noise. And one of which was backing up backup alarms and the opportunities to uh. Alter those as long as they, you know, remain safe and compliant, um, to to limit disturbance to the neighboring properties.
It was rather heated discussion a few years ago, to the point where one of the neighbors wanted to have um flaggers. This board was totally opposed to that. Our risk manager, that I would not wanna recommend that, but if we could just look at the availability.
We, it would be a function from that.
I I understand, but if they, you know, if you could request that, that's been requested in the past. Jim, I know there is a historic site out there somewhere. Are we still far away from that?
Yes, yeah, the uh, I I think it's just cut off of this page, it might not be indicated on this conceptual, but uh it's it's certainly being protected and.
Okay.
Required to be protected in perpetuity.
Um. We talked about the berms, we'll do as much as we can to reduce the ambient noise. With the berms and foliage, correct?
Yes, the earth and berms.
That will reduce some of the noise, correct?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
And then also in in conjunction with the um swish alarms, uh, a big thing has come up um since you were here last. Is the mass idling law, just look at ten to be aware of the mass idling law. I believe it brings it down around five minutes.
Okay.
So the neighbors aren't gonna hear, you know, trucks being turned on. And yeah, that's all the questions I have for right now. Um, I know Jim is going to get a peer review. Again, on the uh stormwater traffic and the noise, Jim, anything else, any other information we need?
Um, no, just a couple of comments I did see come through, um. One, just a reminder and maybe a a further discussion at a later date about reminding the tenants and the new owner about the. Uh, no left turn for tractor trailers out of the site, uh, that was obviously a very robust conversation that we had, why the median is there.
And I understand, we put an island, it really was reduced that, we make it more difficult.
Yeah, make it more difficult and and certainly attempt uh to do so, um, yeah, and then, you know, obviously there's. Um, you know, concerns of the trips which we talked to with Sean about and uh, oh, and, you know, at the next meeting, if we could have. Um, you know, kind of a phased in construction schedule, just a rough conceptual construction schedule, and what I'm getting at is. Uh, trying to get the berm first, um, because that points towards. Uh, the residents and really is the reason why the um, you know, it is a sound mitigation measure, so. If uh, if the applicant is willing and able to, you know, commit to that, I think that would be something that we would like to see.
And then we'll also have a construction management part of this project as well. Um, would I go over it to the public, does anyone out there have any concerns? I know, um, select person Martinez was out there. Don?
Uh, yes, hey, Bill, thank you very much, um. I I've actually been sending some notes to Mr. Cocker, and he's been raising some points of concern. Uh, for me, I don't really have a lot of questions right now until the peer review is complete. Um, my, our, obviously, our biggest concern is the volume of traffic, as you stated. You know, um, the square footage I don't think is 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 a big problem, but we wanna know, and I know it's difficult, but. I'm surprised that they're building this building out. Uh, and and there's not a business plan or an idea, and I believe Mr. Sutherland raised that point as well. I think it would be really, I think, for the neighbors and just for the scenic road purposes. Really like to understand what their intent is with this building, is if it's seven eleven or Snyder Pretzel, which I know is there. Um, so I just, I'd like to just, I wanna hear more, and I think you've raised all of those points. And and I just wanna emphasize, I know, Mr. O'Connell, that you mentioned that there's an island. Uh, the unfortunate side is that that island hasn't really detracted tractor trailers from taking a left.
Okay.
Um, so I think in the, and then if if we go further with this, I'd like to see. Something done with that island to truly make it almost impossible for tractor trailer to take a left out of that parking lot.
I would be in favor of that.
Okay, thank you, because that's something that really needs to be looked at.
Signage on the road.
Yeah.
Perhaps, perhaps, uh, as they leave the property, signage overhead. And obviously instructions uh for delivery people.
So. No, no disrespect, Mr. O'Connell, but signage is useless because they just, they could care less, I mean, we have. We still have continual issues with tractor trailers getting stuck on High Street and having to back. Either back onto one twenty six if they're coming onto High Street from one twenty six or on Maple Street. And, you know, living right there, uh, we see it on a regular basis, it's been reported several times. There are plenty of signs and signs just get disregarded by the driver, so to me. There needs to be a different type of mitigation done, signs don't do it, and I don't want big ugly signs. Make the berm big, ma- make that island larger, make it difficult, like almost impossible for them to drive over. So those are the things that concern me the most, um, it it's really the traffic and it's preventing those trucks from taking a left and. Um, as a town, we're working on, you know, with the state, trying to get GPS routing, not to route them down to High Street, so we're working on that, but. That's a separate issue.
I understand.
But that that's kind of all I have for now.
Select person Martinez, what we want also wanna do, if we're going to change that island, is get the import um. From the uh town safety, uh, police safety.
Absolutely.
You know, so it's not, you know, obtrusive at all for incoming traffic to run into it, and that has to be well lit.
Mm-hmm. Or something needs to be done. Yeah, agreed.
The applicant as well.
I I think, you know, in a situation like that, you know, everything was done with the best intentions. But until you start actually seeing how things are gonna work and they're in production. Um, everyone tries to find, you know, their uh their shortcuts. And and we just need to think about what we could do differently to prevent that, now that we know what's really happening. Again, it was all in the best intentions, everyone on the board and what we came up with, what you came up with, but it's not working, it's it's not effective.
Okay.
We need to come up with something else.
Okay.
And that's my concern, when you, when you hear traffic studies, I I kinda chuckle a little bit personally. Because I've heard enough traffic studies now, and none of it, none of it is ever right on. And when when you do a traffic study and you hear a gentleman present traffic study. And you talk about a warehouse, a warehouse here, this is not a typical warehouse area, this is atypical, this is a mixed use, mixed zone. So when you do a study like that, you have to compare it to a a similar um area. They're they're doing the best case scenario for themselves, they're not truly looking at the impact it has on the community.
Well, I will be requesting from the peer reviewer.
So if you can request a a peer review with a similar type of mixed zoning warehouse, this isn't a typical warehouse. And I think the gentleman presenting, I'm sure he knows that.
Well, you know, um, Jim, could you bring that to your attention, our peer reviewer? And also, could you uh try to recalculate your figures if it's feasible? Based on, you know, it it is unique, yeah, I don't know how many warehouses these days we have in scenic roads.
Exactly, I got my my point, so that's it for me, thank you so much for the time. Yeah, I know.
I'm willing to bet this may be the only one in Massachusetts.
Yeah, beautiful.
So when we walk into that. Jim, anything else from the public out there that I might have missed?
Um, I don't see anybody raising any questions at this time.
So what I'd like to do now, um, we'll need a continuance on this to uh the twenty seventh of January. That will be our second meeting, we have a rather robust agenda for the thirteen. I mean, maybe a little more robust early this evening, I might hopefully ten minutes.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I like to motion to continue this to January twenty seven.
Yep, so I'll make that motion, one quick question for the traffic uh engineer, just. I'm just thinking in my head, and there may be nothing to it, but I'm interested in what your thoughts are, not tonight, but if you're reading. I know what we're adding here is fifty thousand, also not there, fifty thousand square foot addition to to a hundred and twenty two thousand square foot buildings. Yep, um, but we're, so this building has now become a hundred and seventy thousand square feet. What would the traffic numbers? What would the traffic numbers generate for 170,000 square foot building versus the 122? What did that do, that change? Versus just looking at the 50,000, or maybe it's just adding, I don't know, but something to talk about.
Sure.
Well, I'll be continuing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
There's motion of Florida containing the public hearing to Thursday, January 27th, 2022. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Oppose, that motion passes in manor. The gentleman, this will be continued, I want to thank you very much for coming, I want to wish you all happy holidays.
Thank you.
Enjoy your flight back home, sir.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
We all had a chance to review the minutes from the meeting in November?
Yeah, I just have the one comment, I think it was to my person. I only zoomed that one time. I was here.
Anything else? I entertain a motion to approve the minutes from Thursday, November 18th.
The move.
I have a second.
Second.
All in favor of President Minutes from Thursday, November 18th? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes in manor. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
The move. Second.
All in favor of adjourn, signify by saying aye. I want to take a moment, wish you all happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
It's been a great year, I want to thank you all for your support this year, and the public for their support as well. Brian, I'll leave it to you to sign off.
I'm going to vote first, right?
Anyone objecting to majority, please signify by saying aye. No one objected, we all approve.
Okay.